There was some out there.
No, no.
She worked for him. He was the sheriff.
And yet she's...
She would just pay extra. You don't need to actually see it. It was whatever you... You paid extra. Does he know why? Don't tell me he spills them.
Yay!
Is that why?
He's going to pay.
I'm here.
I'm here.
That's how they do that. You know, medicine or... Commission or... Jesse's going to be a surgery. She's going to surgery for five years.
Yeah.
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 Might also be eligible to attend the technical school and costs associated with that, which is why the time is being taken to properly discuss the issues surrounding that in the policy committee meeting and through the legal decision of the attorney for that portion of our school district. So I appreciate everybody wanting to like help this family out and getting their student in as soon as possible, but as soon as possible, in this particular case, may still require the due diligence that would lead us into September.
Well, that's why I'm asking if there's a way to expedite the process.
And I think I'm gonna, you know, I'll be just, I think I would caution that the assumption made is that it's simply because homeschoolers require special education. I don't think that's the case at all.
No, that was my point.
My thought was not necessarily to, you know, take the vote tech discussion out of it. If you do the vote tech, then are you required to do other things that currently we're not because we don't do the vote tech? Like, is it one size fits all or is it, can you sort of à la carte the discussion? Well, yeah, we'll do this, but we won't do that.
But my example, right, but my example is we spend a certain amount of money per student who goes to the technical schools. Is that an accurate statement?
Right.
Okay. Similar to a charter school, we spend a certain amount of money that for students who go to a charter school, that amount has doubled for a student who goes to the charter school who is a special education student. Okay, I'm not sure if the same reciprocal issue exists for homeschool students or for who may be, who may be special education.
The underlying issue I don't have is Mr. Mark Walls Esquire's opinion in front of me, but my understanding is that if you allow one thing, then you open yourself and you would be losing in court if you just pick that one thing. You say yes, but you say no to others, can't do it. And so there's a plethora of opportunities that we offer and that allows the homeschool families to pick and choose what they want to do. Now, there's an opinion there, well, they pay taxes and all that. That's something you have to make a risk assessment on and approximate cost. You know, there's, I don't know how many hundred students that are homeschooled right now in the area we, 150, 130 students out there and you take our percentages of students that are in our school district that have special needs and you take the average student cost that we send out to the charter schools for students who have disabilities, you add all that up, you're talking about a half a million dollars.
Sir, can we, can the administration contact a lawyer and get some clarification on this? Because I would really like to get this, you know, settled for the Del Rossi's so that we can get, know what we're going to do as quickly as possible.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It seems to me that it's clear in the policy and if the policy changes after they're in, that's not their concern, but I don't see why we couldn't just vote for it to be allowed, allow them to go.
Why can't we just vote update the policy?
What's that?
Why can't we just vote update the policy so that it matches the other one like it was supposed to?
I mean, you know, look, I mean, I think our hearts bleed that we want to try to get this child in as well, but I think.
The intent was to pass, though, pass, I want to call it legislation, but, you know, the bylaws, you know, so that they couldn't and we had aimed to fix it so that there was no conflict, but we did not pass the second 115 to have it updated. Why don't we just fix it?
But by fixing it, I think the update was that they weren't going to be allowed.
I know. No offense or nothing, but my point is like, we still got to fix it.
Yeah, no, we have to fix it. Agree. But fixing it says no to these parents.
Yes, but currently, yes, we have applied.
Mr. Garten, question. If the current policy is to allow homeschool students to attend and if we change that policy, then all homeschool students would no longer be allowed to attend, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so in your particular case, I mean, I don't know what the decision of the policy committee would be, but technically we would be sending your daughter to the tech school to start the year. And if for whatever reason the policy committee or advice of legal counsel changes their mind, then your student would no longer be allowed to go continue at the tech school. Is that an accurate statement?
Well, that would be an awful result.
I'm just, right, but I'm just, I'm saying that I don't know if we could grandfather your student in for this year. I'm not sure how old she is or how many years you'd want her to go.
If I may, if I may, everyone, we have another meeting on August 22nd. Okay? If we can get this resolved by then, that should allow enough time, if it should go in your favor, that you can get your child set up and into the school. Administration, Dr. Harner, can we get everything that we need as far as information together so that we can discuss and come to a resolution on this on the 22nd? Ms. Weed?
You will, yeah, and we're meeting, I believe, on the 19th as a policy committee meeting beforehand, which was our plan.
It's next month.
Oh, next month.
Yeah.
Well, then we need to do it before. Yeah.
Okay.
We need the updated legal opinion. We do need that.
I think it's more important to understand, I think the other part to that is can we understand sort of what does this look like for the district? You put it publicly.
And that's everything that we need to look at. Is that acceptable to you both?
No, I have some more things to say regarding this. First of all, as far as I see, the policy's up to date. There was no announcements, there's no evidence of discussion or minutes of it being changed. I don't know what, I don't know what policy you're telling me conflicts with 115. There is none that conflict. So this whole discussion for the past 10 minutes has been that there's conflicting, but there isn't, not on any public record. Maybe somewhere he's had some meeting that he's, we're talking about changing it, but there's nothing that's changed. So I don't know where that conflict is. Okay?
Ms. Weed, can you clarify that?
I don't know the history. I wasn't on the board back when that policy was.
That's all right. Just keep saying what you're saying because times have taken.
I have copies of 137 and I have copies of 115 and they don't conflict.
That's correct.
So, you know, okay, so from my understanding, the school board and superintendent concern should be to provide the best possible education for the children in their districts. Okay? What I see here is like a discrimination against homeschool children. Why are you talking about changing this policy? Why would you change the policy? Okay? Then when they discuss special needs, so my children don't have special needs, but are we now discussing that special needs are going to be discriminated against too? We don't have money for that? I can't believe what I'm hearing.
I think, first off, I think you're completely wrong. That's not at all what I said. What I said was that I think the concern was based around what does opening up.
It opens up. No, I understand what you're saying.
And all I'm saying is, look, I have kids that are special needs kids that require IEPs. I have a teacher that, I have a sister who teaches special ed. I have nothing wrong. All I'm saying from a district perspective.
It opens up.
Is, I have no idea if it opens up. I'm asking the question, does it open up?
Okay.
Something more that we would just have to consider. Not that we would vote against it, but what does the, you know, when you look at an, when you look at an issue.
I understood, and this was.
To look at it in isolation.
This was also discussed at the last meeting, so.
And not in totality.
It wasn't totally what you were talking about.
That's what I have to do. I mean, I'm not against anything. I'm just saying that on one side, we have a limited amount of funds.
Okay.
You know, we're up against tax raises that we've done every year, spending money, spending money, which we hear about. And on the other side, we're trying to say, how do we, how do we protect the money that we have today?
Understood.
And we're just trying to balance it.
Okay.
That's all.
Understood. There's also funding. I mean, like they receive, the tech school would receive funding from the state. This isn't all in school district. You know, I believe that, that my child is entitled to the same opportunities every other child in the district. And I can't understand why, as administrators, as the board for school district, why would we be denying kids because of a situation that their parents chose to put them to homeschool versus send them to the district? Okay? The boards at Pen Ridge, Palisades are all capturing that extra income that's available to them by having more enrollment in the tech school. It's capturing more money. All right?
I think you've sort of convinced us we're ready to move on unless you've got some stellar, you know, million dollar awesomeness.
No, I don't.
You don't need to keep.
But the latest of the discussion was how quick can we change his policy? And I'm not real happy about that.
Or not.
How quick can we get the information? So we have a legal.
No, not what you said, but the gentleman at the end, can't see his name from here, but that was the last thing he said, like, let's change it. No offense, he said, but I do take offense because that's my child. So.
I think we want to look at it. That's my thing is we want more information. We want another legal opinion from our, from our attorney here. We have one saying we shouldn't, so can we get one to look at it?
We will get this resolved by the 22nd.
Okay.
Okay?
You okay with that? All right. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Del Rossi.
Anybody else? No. Is there any other public comment?
Are we allowed to comment? I'm new here.
Come on up and state your name and area of residence.
Marie Robinson, Richland Township. I don't know them. I just listened to this discussion. There are one person standing in front of you right now while your policies are in conflict. It seems like you have current policies. You have a clerical error. It's your error on your side. There may be 150 people that are not standing here right now. I think you could reach a compromise and allow them and then put in the minutes that no one else is allowed because your policies are in flux right now and you are reviewing them and that they are in whatever process and that under advisement and they are being updated and you can put the expediency in updating them and move on. I mean, these people are the one that you could grandfather like the other one person being grandfathered? It's my opinion.
Thank you.
I agree.
Any other public comment? Okay. Next is the superintendent's report, sir.
Yes, yes, sir. First item tonight is about principal supervision, but before I can hand it off to Ms. Edwards, I'd like to begin the conversation by talking about why principal supervision is so important. According to Marzano, who is one of our, probably our most well documented and recent person in meta-analysis on public education and leadership in school districts and in schools, he talks about the 21 dimensions of leadership that principals are supposed to have and that the school system should develop their leadership. He talks about first order change, second order change, and that eight of those 21 are required to get the kicks in student achievement that you expect from us. Almost everywhere I've been or that I know of, most organizations, public education, K-12 organizations are designed where back in the office of teaching and learning where Dr. Hoffman is, resides both the supervision dimension requirements of principals we had when I arrived here and also the curriculum instruction and assessment function. With all those things happening in one office, just with one person being responsible and that person being both the evaluator of ten principals here a couple of years ago, now eight, and also the building curriculum, nothing got done. We didn't even have curriculum maps. Most districts don't have curriculum maps. We have a, we have Mathless, we just approved the purchasing and we're rolling out all our curriculum maps, which is a common platform that we'll be able to share with teachers' parents, anybody who wants to look at our curriculum. Oh, I'm sorry? Good, great point.
I apologize. Thank you. I apologize. I don't want to start all over again. But anyway, so a couple of years ago, when we, we had the opportunity through retirements, people wanting to leave back in the instructional office to go back in the buildings, all those kind of things, we, I bifurcated it with board's blessing, with Dr. Hoffman on one side doing the CIA piece, the curriculum instruction and assessment piece, and Ms. Edwards supervising the principals and taking our principals, which I found in my past, and I have picked 60 principals in my, my time as a superintendent, the big number coming from my first district because I had 90 schools, and knowing that we need leaders, instructional leaders, not managers of buildings if we're going to take care of our students, take care of our faculty. So anyway, with that in mind, for the last couple of years, Ms. Edwards has been responsible for the supervision of principals and on Monday, this past Monday, I'll brag a little bit, she and Adam Schmucker presented at a statewide conference on principal supervision. They were asked to do so. And then this, today, yesterday, she was down in Washington DC at a national, at the National Superintendent's Organization at a workshop with people that are supervising principals across the country. So anyway, that's a big opening statement. I did not repeat the things that I didn't have recorded and on voice. So anyway, without further ado, I asked her to share some of her key points, not giving you the whole presentation, but some key points on the presentation.
All right, and I'm sorry Adam isn't able to be here because when we designed the presentation, we did it from both points of view. So it was the, you know, the point of view of the supervisor, but also the point of view of the people who are being coached and supervised. We had a, an audience that was mixed. There were a number of principals in the audience who would be the supervisee, you know, in the model, but there were also a number of people who supervised principals, including a couple who came from non-traditional backgrounds in education the way that I did and found that some of the things we talked about really resonated. Some of the key things, like just for, from an understanding point of view, all of our supervision models, including for teachers, are coaching based. So yes, at the end of the year, we have to do a summative evaluation because the state requires it, but the purpose of our, of our entire model is really to coach everyone for growth and that's how we approach it. So it, we work through various coaching cycles, both teachers and principals have goals around their professional practice, either leadership practice for principals or instructional practice for teachers. And so that's the whole philosophy with which we operate, you know, the whole system. And there's, it creates an alignment, which is really important. We talked about this a little bit when we talked about like everybody's goals being the same. In the supervision model, we, we don't want to be asking teachers to do things that we don't ask principals to do, for example. So if we think that written reflections are important, they should be important for everyone in the organization as part of the supervision process, not, not just for, for one group. So maintaining that alignment, focusing on, on the coaching aspect are some of the key things. There was one other thing that I wanted to, to mention, but it's been since Monday that we did it. We also talked quite a bit about accountability, but that accountability being for growth, not for perfection. So I think another aspect of it I would focus on is when you're really coaching for growth and supervising for growth, you're creating opportunities to unleash the creativity of teachers in the classroom, principals in their buildings, to feel comfortable examining their own data, taking risks around, around things and not feeling like it's an environment where they can't try something they believe will be effective just in case it doesn't work. And if it doesn't work, then we figure out why it didn't work and we figure out what we're going to do next and we take the next step forward. So it embodies a philosophy, it embodies a, an approach that I think really creates a positive culture and we apply that kind of model from the top all the way to the bottom of the organization. So it was, it was a lot of fun. Adam and I had fun doing it. It was at someplace called Kalahari in the Poconos. I don't know if any of you know where that is, but there were lots of elephants and lions and.
Sounds like that.
It was, yeah, it, it was wild and it was full of kids in bathing suits like running around in water parks and stuff. So it was kind of a wild place, but, but it was a nice opportunity to talk to other practitioners about this important topic, which in research is emerging as a more and more important topic because of the importance of principal leadership. You never ever, there are no examples of a school that moved forward in the absence of effective leadership.
Was, was that the proverbial elephant in the room?
Oh, maybe, maybe. Or we could, you know.
Or in the park?
Eating the elephant one bite at a time, like we could use that also. So anyway, so thank you for listening to me wax poetic about principal supervision. I'm very enthusiastic about it, so.
Thank you very much, Nance. Next topic is on class size and sections across the district. I have, something is personal interest of mine. I've seen the printouts from principals. Matt from the high school, he and I and Patty Sable, guidance counselor to the high school, we sat down a couple of weeks ago, went over class sizes at the high school. I just got Dr. Bubster's report from, for 78 building. I've gotten Eric's report. I'm still waiting to see the numbers across our elementary schools. That's the linchpin here for me. It's, it's interesting. I started receiving a couple of emails about class size at Trumbauer'sville from our current rising second grade parents. I got a couple today. You've heard about Trumbauer'sville last year when Mr. Reimer spoke at the podium where the teachers had made a decision when they had two small 14 student classrooms and they needed a teacher at, at a different level, the teachers combined the classroom and they had a large, a large first grade classroom. And if you recall that conversation, so I, I remember it like it was yesterday. One of the things that most folks don't recall, however, was five years ago, the number one issue in this district was the open areas and how students were assigned. 600 students out of the 2100 or 20, back then 2400 elementary school students, the 600 families and students that were in the center of the district did not know what elementary school they were going to year by year. I remember my very first board meeting, Mr. Fakara, who's now got high school students, he, he stood up at the podium and he says, "My daughter's been in two elementary schools already and I know you're going to send me to a third one." And we used to have a system in neighborhoods where one neighborhood was sending students to three different elementary schools, buses, crisscrossing. Parent committee came back and they made a decision and parent committee made a recommendation to the board. They, they supported it. So we froze attendance areas for five years. In turn, we don't know exactly what's coming out of those attendance areas, so we have a cattywampus class sizes across the district. That open area process allowed us to have level classrooms basically for the kindergarteners for decades. That was our process and that we did things. And then some of you might, that were around back then to approving that, it was for, I guess it was for the 15, 16 school year. So there's a historical perspective. Now, that decision back then to satisfy the 600 now have come back to bite us because we're uneven. And so I'm very sensitive to it. One of the things from the personnel side and the budget side of the house right now, I'm asking for permission during the superintendent's report to allow, to bring back to you, for you to consider, to giving me three F, three more FTEs to hire if we need them. Why? Between the retirements and resignations that you're seeing on here from over the summertime, which we had several surprises due to personal issues, they've left us, we have enough money to hire three. And I'm asking if I would have the permission to, to consider that if we need to do that to make sure our class sizes, the best we can for that. And it still gives us a buffer by, after, after the three, but I would, I'd just like you to consider that and give me just a nod because it's, I'm not bringing you people. But I like to be able to have that back in my back pocket as I meet on Monday with Nancy and the elementary principals and start looking at how we're arranging, arranging our classes.
Sir, to be clear on that point, the money is already in the budget for those.
We have the money.
So this isn't going to be a budgetary change at all?
Correct. Well, you'd be spending, spending money. Some of the monies that's dropped, that we would have saved through retirements and resignations. When you have a senior person.
Sorry, didn't interrupt. Here's what I want to understand. I want to understand FTE count, right? So if FTE counts 100, is it going up to 103 or is it staying at 100?
Under what Dr. Harner just explained, it would be 103.
So it's not budgeted money. It's in addition to what we already currently have.
That's not true if the budgeted money is staff and we retired some higher level and are hiring some lower level and the staff budgetary line, in what way? In what way?
FTE management is FTE management. If you need 100, you have 100. If you need 103 and you have 100, you need to hire three more. That is total FTE counts.
Right, but my point is, if the total budget for staff.
What you're saying is because I would have spent 100 grand, now I'm going to spend 60 grand, so I'm saving 40 grand.
That's not at all what I'm saying. If I, what I'm, no, what I'm saying is if my total line item for staff is 10,000, $10 million, and obviously I don't know what it is, it doesn't matter, and three people retired and three new ones, let's say we hired three new ones, but we, let's say we hired 10 new ones, we lost three, but if I don't need more than $10 million again, it's still $10 million.
All right, hang on for a second before we yak and yak about this. So let me just clarify. Dr. Harner, I, the little thought balloon above my head when you described what you said was you started with 103, three people left over the, or X number of people left over the summer that we were surprised by, so we've got actually capacity? So that's what I heard.
To be accurate, to be accurate, for those positions, say we lost an English teacher, who we did, Dr. Ritter from the, our Esquire, ED, or what do you, JD. Dr. Ritter at, at the high school, she, she is, she moved into Jersey. We have that, very experienced staff member, and now we, we have on the, on the docket tonight to approve an English, brand new English teacher at a significantly reduced salary. So the money dropped to the bottom line, not the FTE that, that Mr. McCucci's talking about.
And, and again, I go back to FTE management is about forecasting the future.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yeah.
And that's, so you're going to spend 60 grand tonight.
And it keeps going up.
By approving these, but that number's going to eventually get back to the top of the salary board and someone is going to have to pay for it.
It'll be 104,000 before you know it.
So, so all I'm saying is FTE count, you got to be careful when you're, when you're just adding it with, with the flawed thinking that I'm saving money because I'm replacing a veteran teacher. Now, I'm, I say that and I say this, if you need the FTE, then we have to consider that, but I don't, I don't, the argument to be made budgetarily is essentially flawed.
Don't fall for the illusion.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, I'd be hesitant without more information only because when we were doing the forecasting and the budget, over five years, we're looking at adding two FTEs. Now we're talking about adding five over that time. And then we're talking about you had 100 slots and people retired, now you're going to add three more slots on, on top of that. I would, I want more detail before giving a nod to something like that.
Well, consider this, please consider this foreshadowing. Our, the board's decision five years ago was to, to support not moving those 600 students around from school to school to have level class sizes. So we've kept to that commitment. You've heard that through parents standing up here in the, in the last six months talking about five years and not be, having students being reassigned to a different elementary school. So I just, it's a foreshadowed public conversation about where we're at and, and it's, and I, you're spot on about the accountability piece of it and the FTE count, and that's exactly what Zach said to me before.
Where are we? Where are we with the five year, where are we in that five year cycle of redistricting?
This is the last year, going into the last year.
So in order to address that, if we're, if he's, if you're asking us to bring in three in reserve, my response, why? Because at the end of this year.
I'm not going to bring them in unless to bring down class size.
But we're about, we can theoretically redistrict next year, which we could shuffle the class size. We told them we would do it in five years and it's coming up on that five year anniversary.
Yes, sir, we could do that, but if you're talking about an elementary teacher, we have 2,100 students out there, you're probably, if we need to do that flex, we will have some retirements and resignations like we do this year. We're bringing on how many new teachers in, long-term? We're bringing on how many new teachers and long-term subs?
I'm ahead of a number.
About thirty-nine?
But I'm, but I'm talking about numerically now, if the if the issue is number of, if FTE is total number and you need three because of the current arrangement, we're about to come up at the end of the year and technically, we could redistrict and reshuffle that. I'm assuming we could, because our, because our population is dwindling, right, then I would assume, then I would assume we could, we could redistrict in a manner, we wouldn't need those three.
Could you talk a little bit about class size, like, what's optimal, like, what your goal is and where where that tipping point is of having, like, excellence in the classroom, like, is it eighteen, is it twenty-two, is it, like, what's the, what are we trying towards?
All the research that's out there that I'm aware of, and I have, I don't have Lisa here to back me up with all that, nor her team, team members, but it's like eighteen to one, above eighteen to one in a class size, it's up to the quality of the teacher in the classroom. And and so
And maybe the quality of the students.
And and we also have that, our poverty's going up and still going up. And so, the ideal is no, for a a half-day K classroom, in my view, in my experience of, and across three districts, is at twenty to one in at max, or the ceiling without aid support or something like that in kindergarten, about twenty-two, twenty-three to one for first and second grade, twenty-five to one, and around twenty-eight to one in in fourth and fifth grade. When I, when I arrived here, the class sizes at the high school were nineteen to one, then, and then the middle school and freshman, no, excuse me, high school was eight, yeah, it was nineteen to one, twenty to one in the freshman center, twenty-five to one in Strayer, twenty to one in Milford, and then twenty-five to one in our elementary schools. And so, we're not, we're, we're in a place with our attrition getting in a better place. We picked up about three teachers that allowed us to do some things and we haven't finished that placement of the three that we talked to you about, because we're down seventy-five students, that's about three teachers, and those students are now in fifth grade. Next year, we'll have another group in there, so you'll have, be able to, that class size in sixth grade center will come down. The year after that, the class size in seventh, eighth grade will come down because you have less students in the building. So, there's, there's some, the growth or the decline in growth, or, I guess, not decline in growth, but the decline of student enrollment
The change in the rate.
Say again?
The change of rate.
Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to talk about class size tonight, we're right before the beginning of the school year, and I wanted to foreshadow this conversation to make sure the public knows we're very sensitive to what's going on out there and we're tracking it.
Well, I say, it sounds like, bring us some numbers and desired numbers, actual numbers, and, you know, show us why you want three FTEs and
I think also
You know, we'll make, be able to make a decision with some data.
Right, I think, and that, and I think the other part is getting creative with, with, you know, I mean, I'm not even sure I understand the actual problem. It sounds like one school may have more students than another school, but I think we need to, I need, I need more information before I would ever approve a budget that goes above. And again, I'm I'm for smaller class sizes, I get that, but, you know, I mean, we just, we're constantly adding, 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 which is, which is operationally going to, going to put us in a bad position in the future. And so, I get the balance, but we have to be smart about it, so.
We had to, just to
Thank you, sir.
And I I take that as great guidance. If you recall, last year, we sent out letters from the challenge in Trumbauer'sville to offer twenty, to twenty-five families to say, "Would you consider going to Richland Elementary School?" And I don't think we got a, we didn't get a single taker. So, coming up with the, but the community is going to come back and expect us and and so we're going to have to, you're going to have to make a decision on it, but we, I don't, I do not have the numbers.
Maybe you should have offered free lunch.
So, I'm okay with free lunch for all the kids. We, maybe we can work on that. Right, guys? But let's feed our kids. I think that'd be great. But seriously, Dr. Harner, I don't think I understood when you had started. I, I think I misunderstood, so I want to make sure I do. You're asking for three more in addition to the teachers that retired, replace those three, three more in addition than what we were, okay.
Three more FTE?
Yes, sir, three, three more FTEs if we need them, and and we'll bring you the data and then you make a decision. What's really good about our our system that's been going on for decades, I think, here in HR, and Nancy can speak at that, is we have long-term subs that come in for for teachers that go, as an example, go on paternity or maternity leave. And and so, we have tested teachers that we could, a pool that we probably would go to like that if we would need to add somebody, but you can't add a long-term sub like that just for our our needs.
It's a union issue.
Yes, thank you very much for that one. Any more comments? The the next one that I have and the last one I have before I hand it off is is a a goal reporting timeline for this year, next year, reporting out on on our progress for this year's approved goals that you had back in June, and then a goal development timeline. One of the things that's interesting, this year, state law, PDE regulations kick in where we're required to go into a very public strategic planning process. Nancy, could you talk a little bit about that and how that works and through your timeline?
Sure, we have to, it used to be every six years, and now it's every three years. And PDE prescribes a very specific process that we go through to do that. So, it'll involve a community survey, there'll be a steering committee established that'll include board members, community members, parents, representatives from the business community, administrators, teachers, there has to be at least one guidance counselor, so it's a broad representation of the community. And that steering committee works together. Joanne Parati from the IU is our local strategic planning expert, and she normally comes in and facilitates the process as an external facilitator. You do a SWOT analysis, you look at at broad goal areas, you break that, break that down. The last comprehensive plan that we had to do was what guided our our goals three years ago that we followed through with the last couple of years. So, it's a pretty, I was going to say, it's a comprehensive process, but I guess that's kind of silly since it's a comprehensive plan. But that will be a major factor in driving goal development for for 2021 because we are required to, we're Phase Two district, every district is Phase One, Two, or Three. Phase Two districts are, will be doing the process this year and have to approve their comprehensive plan. I want to say it's September thirtieth, but normally, we try to do it in June so that it guides the goal work for the following year. So, that's kind of a overview.
Big purpose of this, again, is foreshadowing. I know there's several of you are interested in goal development this year, next year, and I needed you to know that, hey, we got something that we have an external requirement that the state's requiring us to do that, and it's very comprehensive, and it involves going out and bringing in students, parents, teachers, of board members to, into the process.
And then, with this process, so if some of these goals are going to be set are like an overreaching year-over-year, like, three-year plan, as we were talking about, the different metrics that were established by previous boards that we talked about in this board, is that what we're?
That is correct.
Okay.
Last part of superintendent's report is a short presentation, something near and dear to the the board's heart from a conversation we've had here at the board table back since December and other venues. Jen, you want to introduce first?
Sure. As Dr. Harner said, we've had high school students come and speak to you about vaping in our high school. We've had middle school students speak to our safety committee when they went to Strayer to talk to them, and we also unfortunately have students who are trying vaping at our sixth-grade center as well. And so, Dr. Harner heard Melissa Groden speak at one of the superintendent's meetings. Melissa and I met when I started in Quakertown five years ago. She is a great lady who provides a lot of resources to our district specifically. She hires and oversees our SAP counselors that we have, two, next year, we'll have two at the elementary level, one at the middle school level, and two at the high school level. So, I'll let Melissa kind of give her background and really talk about vaping in Bucks County and vaping in our district, as well as what we can do to try and prevent that and provide you with resources that we can also turn around and provide to our parents. So, Melissa.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. I I do want to, besides thank you for having me to speak about the vaping today, I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank the board for approving our student assistance services for this upcoming school year. We are very excited, very pleased to have five SAP counselors in the district. The work that they have done this past year has been amazing. And a lot of what I'm going to talk about briefly tonight is some of the things that they are experienced with, and when we talk about resources, some of the supports that they can provide to the students in the district as well. Some of you may have seen recently, there's been some news articles about kids in Wisconsin who have been hospitalized from vaping. There's been eleven youth and young adults who've been hospitalized for shortness of breath, for difficulty in, they're, they're losing weight, they are getting dizzy, lightheaded, and what is the commonality between all of them is they've all been vaping recently. The Wisconsin Department of Health is actually investigating if there is something maybe that was going on in the product that they were vaping, but nevertheless, this is the first story that we've had where there's been severe lung damage to youth and young adults who have been vaping. And vaping kind of came out of nowhere for us. It is something that, we've seen electronic cigarettes, we've, we've seen people use them, we see them in magazines, we see them out in public, but when the Juul came out, that was something that none of us were prepared for. And I can speak for educators across Bucks County, no one was prepared for the amount of students who were going to be either engaged in vaping, vaping on school property, and then coming into a dependency on the product itself. So, some of the information, just to make sure that people are aware, vaping is the use of electronic nicotine devices. It is a device that is operated with heat, with a power source, it is something that is more portable, it is expensive, but it's more portable, it is something that is targeted to our youth. The owner, the CEO of the company that makes the Juul product, there, there's been a lot of stories this past week as well, saying that they did not mean to misrepresent what Juul was, but there was testimony from a lot of students that people were coming into their classrooms and saying that this was safe to use for kids. The FDA has not approved the use of electronic nicotine devices for anyone under the age of eighteen, nor have they approved it as a nicotine replacement therapy or a cessation device. What is concerning for us is we see there's an evolution, what I had talked about, that kind of, at the beginning, it's, it looks like that metal cigarette, and now we're getting into pods and modifications that are really looking like everyday objects. The the Juul looks like a USB drive. And what we believe is that was intentional. It could be something that someone, i- if your students are issued school-issued computers, they can charge their Juul device in their computers, and no one would think anything differently because it looks like they're using their USB. They're doing it in the bathrooms, they're doing it in classes. There are students who are vaping and blowing the vape into their sleeves. There are kids that are vaping nicotine products, but primarily, the kids that we see vaping are vaping THC, they're vaping marijuana. There's also been reports of students who are vaping essential oils. The things that we need to be concerned about with that is essential oils are not made for human ingestion. A lot of the pods, the flavored pods, are not made for ingestion either. They are made to enhance and to entice people in using them with the flavoring. So, we have a, we truly have an epidemic right now with vaping, and it is, a lot of kids will say that they do not agree with smoking, they think it's bad, they will never smoke a cigarette, but they will vape their essential oils. So, there is a discrepancy in the education and the awareness of ingesting products. What is something that people don't always see as well is that there are a lot of different modifications. Vaping has not only become something that people do, it's an activity that people engage in. And it is the trading cards of this generation of youth, I think is fair to say. There is a lot of trading and you can see there are mods that are made to look like superheroes, there are mods made to look like a Wii Remote, an Altoid. If you had a student in a classroom that is holding on to the modification that looks like a tin of Altoids, if they're holding it the right way, no one would know that they were actually holding paraphernalia. So, there's so many different flavors. Juul is the same thing as an e-cigarette, there's no difference except for the name and the pretty packaging for it. One pod of Juul juice is the equivalent to smoking twenty cigarettes. It is the equivalent to smoking one pack of cigarettes. And there are kids who are smoking the whole pod in one sitting. So, it's something that we need to really look at, how we can support our kids, how we can educate our kids. There's resources in the back that are bigger versions of what you're seeing right now, but it is specific to Pennsylvania and what we're seeing in Pennsylvania. It is definitely the next step for our kids. We're getting a lot of attention, but there's still so many kids that are using it. Actual smoking tobacco, cigarettes, is so low in Bucks County, but the use of vape is rising. In 2019, there's going to be an opportunity for the school districts within Bucks County to participate once again in the Pennsylvania Youth Survey. Quakertown was one of the districts who participated in 2015 and 2017. Thank you for that participation. In Bucks County, we had, in 2017, eleven school districts participate in this survey. And what came out of that was, we saw a rise, an increase, in kids who said they had tried vape products at least one time in their life. I anticipate in 2019, we're going to see those numbers, yeah.
If I may, those numbers are very deceiving.
Yes.
In twenty, 2015, the first time, or the, my first time, I saw a Quakertown PACE report, we were in the teens for use. In 2017, we were at thirty-seven percent use by our high school students, thirty-seven percent use, and that was two years ago, two full academic years ago, I would imagine. And also, she started off talking, since I'm on a short roll here, talking, we've had nine-one-one and ambulances called twice for students who have passed out after they were, a Juul was shared with them, and I don't recall the substance that was there, but we, they, the, the young lady just, the one just hit the floor. So, it's, it's prevalent here, and that's why I wanted to get you sensitive to the
And that was a really great segue into what I was going to say next, so we did not practice this at all. The numbers are deceiving because this, these are county numbers. I I do not have access to the district numbers, but what is concerning is in Bucks County itself, the current class that's going into eighth grade. So, at that time in seventeen, they were sixth-grade students. One point seven percent, a little under two percent, of the students had said that they tried a vape product. Now, it doesn't seem like that might be a very high number in comparison to the rest, but when you kind of dig deeper into the PACE data comparison to the rest, but when you kind of dig deeper into the Pays data, the highest percentage of students who said they didn't know why they did it, they just wanted to do it, were the sixth graders. And that's concerning, because you've got a group of kids that are susceptible and eager to learn new things and don't know why. And they don't know why they want to try, but they just do. And what we then also saw was, in 12th grade, so this was your graduating class two years ago, 37% of students in 12th grade had reported vaping. So this is, we see a progression. As we get to eighth grade, so your current 10th grade classes and your current seniors, we were looking at countywide, not your current seniors, 10% to 30%. So we see as they get older. And some of the things that we need to encourage is conversations, education, awareness. I am not entirely sure if this video is going to play.
I wasn't sure. I didn't know you had a video, so there's going to be no audio.
There is no audio.
Daddy's not...
No, there is audio, but there is no, so basically, what this is, is a very short 30-second, I believe, video that is a student basically saying to, or a son saying to the mother, "Mom, I'm going out with my friends. I know that you don't necessarily approve of who my friends are. I know you don't necessarily approve of what my friends do. But they're my friends, and I'm going to go out with them, and I'm going to vape while I'm out with them, because they vape and they're my friends. Now, if you don't want me to vape, maybe we should have a conversation about it. But we haven't talked about it, so my friends are getting to me first." So it's basically looking at the fact that our kids are getting information. They're encouraged, they're seeing things, and our kids are curious. And they are deceived by thinking that this is a safer alternative to smoking. And they don't have the education on what the causes are, the health causes, the fact that you are making a conscious decision to violate school policy by vaping on school grounds. Not to talk about why, but there's two things. The use itself and the decision to use with the knowledge that it's against policy. Some of the resources that are available within this district, and there is a lot of resources, besides the five SAP counselors that will be in the district next year, they can work with students, they can do one-on-ones to help the students. You have had Karen Foundation and my agency, the Council of Southeast Pennsylvania, come in to do education for students, as well as cessation, to really work in motivational interviewing with the students to try to engage them in refusal skills and try to get them to stop. There's also a group from Bradbury-Sullivan LGBT Community Center that works with a group of students, I believe in the high school, and they are youth advocates. And they go and they talk to legislators about the dangers and what they see in the schools for vaping. And I can tell you, the legislators are just as concerned as our educators in this. There are additional resources that I gave links, because these are more professional, well, more professional resources as well, but these are resources that are available to the community, to educators, to the students. The vape talk through the American Lung Association is a new initiative. It is a fantastic initiative. The Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission has developed a vaping prevention toolkit with education and resources. That is a direct link to a PDF of that. My agency as well, we provide a lot of services that we spend a lot of time talking about how we can fill some of these needs for the students within the community. And as I said, I left all the resources that I kind of referred to. So it is something that, while it has crept up on us very quickly, this district has been very responsive to addressing it, to educating staff, to educating students, to making sure resources are available to the community. And I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk to you all. Yes.
Ms. Groden, thank you. One question, one comment, or actually, two comments.
Okay.
Excuse me. Just this week, and I shared this with Dr. Harner recently, there is now going to be a study done, because there appears to be a link between vaping and seizures.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
They're going to do more work, because they want to establish what is that link. But apparently, there's been a spike in kids
Yes.
that are vaping, that are having seizures.
Absolutely.
That, I have an epileptic child, so that
Concerning, yes.
It's extremely concerning
Yes.
that there could be something in the chemicals in this material that could cause that.
Correct. And we don't really, truly know all of the chemicals that are put in some of the modifications and the pods.
The other comment, and you kind of smiled at me when you mentioned it earlier, but I happened to see some of the Senate Committee
Yes.
of the CEO of Juul. And let me tell you, I didn't buy it for a second, when he said, "Oh, we don't want to market this to kids."
Correct.
Come on.
The industry itself, I'm not going to, I might exaggerate the number, but it's about $1 million a minute in advertising.
And this was totally marketed to kids.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Anyway, thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Actually, I had two questions.
Oh, yes.
That was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
When you say resources are available, Joe, is this kind of stuff like posted on the new website?
This is the first time. I don't know if Janet has anything under Student Services, but certainly, we could put it up there.
Okay.
Is she needs on the table?
I can absolutely, everything that is on the table, I have PDF version of, everything on the link, and I can absolutely share that with, and I can share that.
That's great. And then, when you were talking about the study, is this, Dr. Harner, did you sign out this report last fall?
It is posted up on the website?
Where it was saying that there was a pretty decent population of parents buying, was it alcohol cigarettes, or was it this piece of it?
I don't remember that. I'm talking about the Pays report that's posted.
Okay.
There is a component of the Pays report that does ask questions about where did you
Oh, yes.
Where did you get the alcohol?
Yes.
And for our middle school students, they got it from home.
And it was like 30%, yeah, it was like, it was like, it was like, kind of like...
Home access is probably the most dominant. Some of the, and please forgive me if anyone here, but there does consistently be a, seem to be a problem when a policy, if a policy dictates that the paraphernalia has to be ceased, thank you, I can't think of the word, that confiscated, that parents have been calling back and saying, "I want that back because that cost me $60, or that cost me $100 to purchase." So that's definitely, it's definitely a concern that we see as well.
And I know we had talked about it last year. What are you seeing across the state as far as, we talked about like disciplinary action, was it $50, $100?
Yeah.
Confiscation. What are you seeing districts doing in those situations?
We are seeing a variety of things. We see some districts that are requiring the students to have a six-session, one-on-one with their SAP counselor. We're seeing some districts that are mandating education. One of the flyers that I brought is a program called Catch My Breath, which we are going to be introducing this year to our services. All of our SAP counselors are going to be educated on that, as well as we have another funding through the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission to provide our prevention specialists. And that's an education that could be used in conjunction or in lieu of a fine, not in lieu of what the policy says, but it could be some additional component education. My personal thought on that is that we also need to address the behavior, what caused the behavior, not just the actual behavior as well. Thank you.
And can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
You had mentioned that you get calls, other districts, or we probably have two where the parents call and want the paraphernalia back. What do other districts do? And specifically, do you have the right to destroy the paraphernalia?
I can say that I have been, some of it has been donated to me, for, not to me, to my agency, for a paraphernalia presentation. Some policies say that it has to be returned by the end of the day, or the parent has to come in and pick it up. Some policies say that at the end of the year, if no one has come to claim it, you can dispose of it. So there is not a consistent procedure for what they do. If the parents are asking for it, usually, the school will require them to come in in person and pick that back up and tell them they can't bring it back again.
And I think the scary thing about it is, is not that, you know, I mean, I think teenagers in their brain are meant to experiment. Mammals, that's what they do, they experiment. But what's crazy is, what they're experimenting with today, the synthetics, whatever the synthetic is, it doesn't matter whether it's, you know, they're doing CBD oils, or essential oils, or, you know, the THC's
Yes.
or anything else. I mean, the fact that they have no idea what the mixture is.
And I think it's important, too, also, when we do the education, is to remind people that their brains are not fully developed yet.
Oh, yeah.
So cognitively, they can't always make an informed decision. They have a, you know, "I want it now" philosophy versus where a fully-developed brain is going to be able to weigh the pros and cons and identify the risks, and a teen brain is going to say, "Yeah, whatever."
And that's what I mean. I mean, you know, alcohol's been experimented
Yeah.
for years, you know, decades.
Yeah.
Centuries.
Yes.
Cigarettes, the same thing. I mean, we could argue, I guess, that we don't know what's in a cigarette either.
There's
But
Yeah, a lot.
You know, there's, but today with the synthetics, it's literally killing people because they have no idea what they're taking.
And it's one of the things why it's important that the social-emotional pieces that have been addressed, especially with your student assistance program here, is important, because some of that is a reflection. You know, it is trying to help support the student so they can make positive decisions, they can deal with the stressors, or have healthy coping skills.
Thanks for the work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other recommendations you recommend that this district does for vaping? I've heard back from a lot of high school students, and it's a real problem in our high school.
I think that there's an opportunity to get the student body involved, especially with your youth advocacy. There is, there are uprisings that are occurring, that occur throughout the year, that the groups of youth advocates can raise awareness. There's specific activities that they can do in the school with other students. I think that sometimes they don't want to listen to us. Sometimes they want to listen to somebody who is, you know, maybe five years older than them, or the same age as them. And it's hard, because we, in the tobacco prevention field that I work in, we say we're pro-smokers, meaning that we support people in being healthy. So we're not going, we don't support people to smoke, but we want them to be healthy. So we're not going to hold it against them if they are smokers, or if they use substances. We want to help them. And I think that that's the, to continue what you're doing already, and to provide the opportunities to support the kids, especially the ones who are avoiding specific bathrooms, because they don't want to go in there, and the ones that don't feel comfortable going certain places. I think finding ways for them to advocate within would be helpful for them.
Is there, is there, is there any way, we have a new administration at the high school, and this is certainly a big problem. I'm hoping to that point right there, you hear stories all the time, we just, I don't go to the bathroom during the day, because people are always vaping.
Yes.
For the administration, is there something we are going to implement to curb that? Obviously, it's silly to say, "Oh, we're going to put somebody in the bathroom, monitor 24/7," but when you hear a story that people just aren't going to the bathroom because it isn't safe, or whatever you want to say, I'm hoping there's something we can do about it.
You don't have high school students. I'm hearing that, absolutely.
I wanted to
I used to go in with six-foot tall bodies. That's how we did it.
We had a student representative here that said that.
I absolutely do believe it, David. I
Drones.
These kids are
But the question is
You know, good kids, and they don't want to go to the bathroom.
It's interesting. I wanted to wrap up the conversation.
Sorry, yeah.
I'm very grateful, Melissa, that
Thank you.
I should have met you long before this summer, since your people work in our buildings, and we're very grateful for that support. I went to a conference down at the IU with Jason. It wasn't superintendent, I was the only superintendent in the room. I was with Jason Magnitsch, member of the high school team. And it was from every school district, and they had their security team leaders, the people who weren't teachers, they were like SROs, all kinds of things. They had like eight people from Pen Ridge there, that were PE teachers, health teachers, trying to figure out what the answer was, what everyone else is doing. One, this is the big thing, it's caught everyone off guard, because it's come on so strong. Two, you need to be concerned, because I think in extrapolation of connecting the dots between
Groden, thank you.
Thank you.
Our growth from in the teens up to 37% two years ago, we're going to be around 50% or more in this Pays report, and a seriously unhealthy practice. And so that's what I wanted you to know. But no one had a solution in the room. If she was standing there, she would have, she would have confirmed that for you. They, we put in devices. Joe went out and got us a test device to put in there. It didn't work. Other districts did it, it didn't work. So there is nothing out there to prevent it right now, other than communications, honest communications with our children. And, yes, please.
Um, how was it?
Well, one thing is quite convenient tonight. We have the high school principal and potentially two new assistant principals here, so they're hearing that, plus the members of the cabinet. So they, I'm grateful that you listened, and you really understood what we're dealing with here.
I think the biggest thing is, I really think it's, I think it's education up front. I mean, these things are, I mean, they're tiny. I mean, you can't even see them. So, I mean, you're walking down a hallway, a plume of smoke comes up, you have no idea who did it. Things back in their pocket. You're not finding people. So it's, I think, I think what we're, I think the approach is, you have to be education, and then you have to have consequences for if you're caught on school property. And I think they should be somewhat severe in nature with confiscating stuff. I mean, I
Well, that's why I asked the question, if we can destroy it. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I would like to have that
I'd like to know that.
in policy, then in policy.
And then we can do the policy, because I
All three of you discussed that.
Yeah, no, I think that is inappropriate
One of the things, if you recall, back in January
No, you can't use these.
One of the things back in January, to not criminalize our students, that's the, it's a terrible thing. And you, we could easily, with a lot of inconvenience to the administrative team, take our students down to the local magistrate and wait for their turn, and you see Judge Geyer, and get fined. Or we'd have our own discipline inside the, our building, and that's what we've, we did in January. I think we had a little bit of discussion about that. And so we're not criminalizing our students. If it's that big a problem, we don't need to put that, that problem out in the courts. We need to solve it through education and conversation and counseling.
We have a TV station and stuff. We run loop video, like, all day in the school, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Right. So maybe a PSA or something embedded in there on the dangers of smoking and vaping may be something that we could probably add in there, just as a suggestion.
Thank you.
Well, apparently, this, maybe this isn't an option, and you've thought about it, but a couple of high school students were asking me whether you could have teachers in the bathrooms at places, because they, they expressed to me that they were leery about going to the bathrooms.
Some of the kids are doing it in class.
Yeah, no, I know, but the bathrooms apparently are a real problem, so.
Yeah. It's crazy. My wife tells me the same thing. It's not just
Is that, is that an option?
That's a possibility.
Okay. I'm just saying, I'm throwing it out there. Two students at a graduation party last week, who are upcoming juniors, they're your best and your brightest, I'm not giving their who are upcoming juniors, they're your best and your brightest, I'm not giving their names, but they both said it's a real problem with the bathrooms, and asked me specifically why the high school's not putting teachers or someone in there to monitor.
So, are people at vape like bullies?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Take those.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
A comprehensive report, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I think we need electronic cigarette jamming devices, that's all.
Well, we should just taze the people.
Taze.
Jeff, I just want to make sure, do you plan to join us in executive session afterwards? Good, thank you.
Drones.
Okay.
This brings us to our standing committee reports, and Mrs. Weed, if you would, do the honors for the policy committee.
Yeah, I'm not going to read all these policies, because they're posted, but we did have a productive meeting in June going through these. We already discussed with the family, the Del Rossi's, that were here early, about policy 115 and 137, we need to get an updated legal opinion on that, and we will have an answer by the 22nd, as we said earlier. Another AR policy we looked at was policy 1026 AR, we got a request from Ryan Weens to consider a change of the language, which we did, and we did add language to a step that allows an employee to submit a complaint to the supervisor of the immediate supervisor, if you're complaining about your supervisor. So, I know that's very redundant, but we do not need board approval on this, because it's just an AR, but we updated it, and that's on the board docs. We also got a request to update policy 218.3 on bullying and cyberbullying, and the request was to add bullying policy for employees. And there are a number of other district policies that address this topic, including policy 104, nondiscrimination in employment practices, policy 400, ethical behavior of professional staff, policy 317, 417, 517, disciplinary procedures for employees, and policy 011, board standards for effective governance and code of conduct. So, we felt that the conduct that would fall under the definition of bullying can already be addressed by the existing policies, but we're going to look at them again in more detail in September. Mr. Schock, I'm so used to calling you Zach, but you sent a draft policy on student obligations for legal review, correct? And we're expecting to have those, that information back from our attorney by September.
He and I authored it together, I'm not mistaken, am I right?
Okay, so, we can probably do a first reading on that, then, in September? You think? Okay. And we'll discuss it, okay. And then, we did an update on revisions to the safety policies. Ms. Edwards is working on updating and adding language to address a number of issues identified by the community safety committee, so.
And the disposal of contraband from things like vaping is one of the things that's included in one of those policy drafts.
I know we had discussed it, I just don't remember if we had a legal opinion about that.
Yeah, not yet, but Officer Lee had recommended that we look at that change from one of our SRO meetings last year.
Okay, and then we have policies for first readings tonight, and these are pretty dry, and they're on your board docs. So, you really don't want me to read them, because they go on for pages and pages. It's, I don't need to read them, is that correct?
Correct.
Turning on, yes, okay, we'll just give you the numbers. It's policy 610, which is on purchases subject to bid, policy 613, cooperative purchasing, policy 618, student activity funds, along with the AR 618. And I believe that's it. Did I leave anything out? Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Weed. Moving right along, the finance committee, Mr. De Liberto.
Thanks, Mr. Klein. The finance committee met on June 27th, myself and Mr. Jackson are present, Ms. Mitchell was absent. The finance committee meeting, held a meeting to discuss the committee's expectations for the goals of the upcoming year. One of the items that we had asked for is pertaining to the United Elementary Schools renovations. We're looking for a monthly report that states the cost to date, whether we are working under or over budget, and our remaining costs. And we also, kind of pertinent to tonight, asked for a report stating on staffing as relates to open versus filled FTEs and budget impact. The administration is looking for input for other reports that the board would like to see at our meetings.
Let me see, a million dollars, Mark.
We also discussed ways to generate additional revenue for the district other than tax increases. One of the ideas was discussed was a donation campaign, and what options that the district could have to reach out to other businesses. We discussed the annual compensation update letters, and we're looking to have that delivered for the August finance meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. There was discussion on the parent committee on student start times, will have an impact on the budget going to a two-tiered system. The facilities and finance committee at both asked the administration to consider long-range plans for a baseball field. And then there's also continuing analysis on the Act 153 resolution, which regards freezing the millage rates for preserved farmlands and open space properties. Thank you.
Do you have a recommendation on that? Or, because I thought that was an interesting presentation.
Yeah, so at the next finance meeting, which is the 22nd, I'll have just a brief update on what the cost would look like, the loss of revenue from that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. De Liberto.
Can I ask a question? With regards to the FTE count, so you're looking, you're looking at total FTE count, but you're also looking at vacancies, right?
Yeah, so my question around that was, we had talked about how there were slots in the budget, and whether the position was filled, or it was an open FTE space, so that's why I asked for the report with that.
So, is it, and you're going to break it out by professional staff versus other?
I could certainly do that, it's more, it's probably more relevant for professional staff, because it's such a large part of the budget. What we talked about is, so, what we ended the budget with, how many FTEs, and how much money that was, since then, people retired, what does that actually look like in savings as people go out on leave, not by name, obviously, but what's the impact on the budget with that? So, just trying to keep a monthly tally analysis on that on an ongoing basis.
And where you're at, can you look at open, or positions that are filled by long-term subs versus?
Yep, yep, and we've already started that analysis, we'll probably have our first update at the next finance meeting, actually, on that. Ms. Caseman actually tracks it for leaves, and Ms. Phillips tracks it for FTEs, as people retire, resign, what's the savings there. And also, keep in mind, as far as reporting is concerned, I always get the mistakes, at Financial Five, or Financial Four, what's it?
Forecast Five.
Forecast Five was something that we invested in last year, that gives us visibility across the entire state to do comparison. So, if there's things that you're curious about, how we look at, we look at different elements and compare it to other school districts. I know we talk about that a lot, what's other school districts, how do we rate? So, keep that in mind as things are kind of going through your head. Yeah, we're going to try to just pick one report and present on it each finance meeting, but if somebody has something that they're interested in, I can't guarantee the system can do it, but if we can, we will, if we can't, we'll let you know that we can't, that it doesn't have that capability.
Next up is the facilities committee, which is Mrs. Mitchell's committee, however, she's not here, so I'll give the report out. There was a facilities committee meeting on Thursday, August 1st. We had Mr. Marino from Richland Township Parks and Recreation Board gave a 45-minute presentation about three potential parks that could be used for baseball fields. For those of you that aren't aware, we are under a real issue with not having enough baseball fields, good baseball fields, for our team to be able to play. So, this was something that was brought to us from Richland Township that could be looked at as a potential solution to that problem. There's a lot that goes into this, there's a lot of, I think, questions that we would need answers from the township and our solicitors before we would consider moving forward with anything like this, however, again, it's something that we want to try to resolve for the baseball team. There was an update from Mr. Jamie Lynch of Dewey Engineering about the United Elementary School additions and renovations. In a nutshell, things are moving along well, he framed it as everything is on pace, there have been no major issues that have come up as of yet, and he did make it a point of complimenting the Quakertown Borough officials for having the utility completed, and their people are very engaged with this project, which is really, really good to hear. There was a update on some of the summer capital projects, Mr. Christine and Mr. Spataforo spoke about those. There was an update on the facility survey and five-year capital project plan, and then we also got a presentation of the 2019-2020 food services capital projects needs, that's on the agenda tonight to be voted on, we need to get some new equipment in for them, a lot of our equipment's in really, really bad shape, and really is well past its useful life cycle. There was also an update, Mr., and I'm going to butcher his last name, Isle of the SSC, he is the custodial manager, came in, and-
Pardon?
Ely, thank you, told you I would butcher it. And he gave us a update on how things are going over the summer. So, that was the facilities committee. Moving on to the education curriculum committee, Mr. Anderson.
We had not meet.
Okay. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit, number 22, Mr. Jackson.
The IU met back in August, and I presented to you on your board docs a list of items that were approved in that time. The only thing is, on a personal note, as far as the IU is concerned, Mr. John DiAngelo is the IU board president, he's from the Bristol Borough School District, and sadly, his wife passed over the weekend, I will be down in Bristol tomorrow morning for that funeral, so, just a sad note there.
And the legislative report, Mr. Jackson.
Legislative report is also attached to your board docs, those who are interested in the politics of the things that are concerning your schools, please take a moment and look at that. The one legislative thing I would want to highlight, and I would trust the administration's on top of this as well, is that the state did pass legislation allowing for remote learning during snow days. We talked about this as a board a couple of years ago, chose not to go through with it for a number of reasons, now it's permitted statewide, and I'm not sure if the administration is picking it up, but I trust they are. You don't need to say yes or no, I'm just saying, I'm sure it's something the administrator's looking at, and so.
I was, the IU just sent out a survey earlier this week, and there are no school districts I'm aware of, there, excuse me, there's one district that's looking at it, nobody has applied for it, because you have to apply to the state on how you're going to do it, and the, so, I would think 12 out of 13 school districts are not going to apply for that this year. There's some, a lot of unanswered questions, as the other districts, three or four districts were the pilot districts, are, one of our biggest concerns is how do we deal with our students with, have a disability, they cannot do a remote kind of education, they need to have a teacher right there, and how do you, how do you provide that service when everyone else is getting it remotely?
And again, my comment was simply that, I trust the administration is looking at it, and you are.
Yeah, well, we have looked at it, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And the Upper Bucks County Technical School, Mr. Akmanowicz.
Man, is there a lot going on and to report on, everybody get comfortable, just kidding. I'm going to, yeah. I'll just be summarizing, Mr. Sweda, he sent an update email, just these last few days, and I'm just going to surmise it. PSBA has come in under the request of the school to review our policies for conflicts or redundancies, they'll be reporting back in August, JOC meeting. Current estimate totals put the tech school at about 34 additional students over the last year, we successfully opened two new programs this year, the HVAC and the AgTech program. With the retirement gal in our business department, the discussion is to possibly contract with the Bucks County IU for some business department functions. We're going to be discussing this more in the future, several processes and functions need to be brought up to date and improved slightly. You know, everything's going good, though. With a recent focus on our food truck project, much of the funds have been raised, we still have a little way to go, we need to raise about $17,000 from sponsors, so if you know anybody, any companies or businesses that want to sponsor the food truck, that would be fantastic. We've raised about $23,000 so far for the food truck project, using sponsors and grants. Mr. Sweda has been speaking about this undertaking a lot lately, actually, he said that he did a speech at the CTE Leadership Conference last Wednesday and Thursday, and he'll also be presenting on the food truck again in November at the CTE Integrated Conference in State College. We are one of two schools in Pennsylvania currently allowing students to gain experience and income with their undertaking, with this undertaking. We have a new pole barn at the tech school, it's partially constructed on a property, the students will be working on improvements, and building out the inside of the building, and building rooms, and adding the electricity, and all the great things that our students do. Finally, just to kind of touch on an important thing that changed last meeting, we changed our contract to Interstate, who is our new maintenance provider for janitorial maintenance services. That's going to conclude my report this evening.
That wasn't too bad.
I know, it's, looking out for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Akmanowicz.
We appreciate it.
Okay, this brings us up to an item for board action, and that item is for us to appoint a PSBA voting delegate. If you look in your board docs, there's a rather lengthy explanation, I'll just review what the responsibilities of this delegate is. The voting delegates officially represent the entire school entity in the following ways. They receive reports from the PSBA president, chief executive officer, and treasurer, they receive the election results for PSBA leadership, including the governing board officers, at-large representatives, and sectional advisors, they consider proposals recommended for the PSBA platform committee, and adopt the legislative platform for the coming year, and consider and act upon any proposed changes to the PSBA bylaws. Currently, Mr. Anderson is our representative, he is our only representative, we can have more than one. So, at this point, Mr. Anderson, would you like to continue on as being our representative?
Are you going to still do it?
Sounds like a Ron Jackson post.
Okay, so, you aren't interested in continuing, Mr. Jackson, you are?
We could put two, right?
Yeah.
Put both of them.
I second that motion.
No, but Kayla.
It's, it's-
She's not here, is she?
So, Ron, you want to do this?
Yes, it was my intention to do that, yes.
Okay, would anybody else like to?
Not it.
Mr. Kern? I hear they talk about drones sometimes.
You got to take Friday off, it's a Friday day.
During the day, yeah, that's a problem.
Get my drone legislation.
Okay, well, since this is an appointment, I guess you're appointed.
Congratulations, sir.
Does anybody have any problems if Mr. Jackson is our representative?
I'm elated.
Okay.
Thanks for stepping in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson.
There is there.
No, not much.
We did it last week, because that was the IU that we're talking about.
All right, the next agenda item is public comment on fiscal items being presented for a vote tonight. Please come up to the podium, state your name and area of residence.
Hi, my name is Mariana, I live in Quakertown in Milford Township, this would be my first meeting, and I haven't publicly spoken in like six years, so bear with me, and I wasn't planning on speaking, so I have a lot of notes.
I'm sorry, ma'am, what's your last name?
Zargarian.
Okay.
First of all, about the baseball field, Great Blue Heron Park, the kids and I call it our secret park, because nobody's ever there. The kids and I call it our secret park, because nobody's ever there, and it's empty fields. There's always deer, so if you need a space...
Can you say that again?
Great Blue Heron Park.
That's here in Quakertown? Super secret?
It's very secret. You have to go into a development to actually get into the entrance, and there's actually a trail that goes behind houses.
Okay, now it's not secret anymore.
That's okay. That's okay. The kids will play, some kids to play with when they're there. Okay, so I have short-term and long-term goals for you guys as related to full-day kindergarten. Again, it's my first meeting. I don't know if I'm being redundant with somebody who spoke at a past meeting. I have a child going into kindergarten next year. So the short term would be how full-day kindergarten is tested for. As of now, it's kids who don't know a certain amount of things at the testing move forward to the full-day classes.
Mr. President, not to interrupt necessarily, but I mean, the public comment was for the fiscal items on the list. Do we want to ask her to speak at the end?
Yeah.
I can do that.
Yeah. If you don't mind.
Sorry. It's a weird process thing. You're probably not talking about the stuff that's on the specific part of the agenda, which is really boring.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other fiscal public comment? No? Okay. First up is the approval of the June and July 2019 Boucher and James Bills List. These are on board docs. There needs to be a motion to approve the Bills List. There's two items on there. Let's see. Actually, these are both tied into the Nightig project as well as sidewalk work, and I can barely read this.
They're both in the 5K range.
Yeah. So...
Slightly less.
Total's about $10,000.
Do I have a motion to approve the June and July 2019 Boucher and James Bills List?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Akmanowicz, discussion. All those in favor of approval of the June and July 2019 Boucher and James Bills List, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstention.
One abstention. The motion passes almost unanimously. Okay, that brings us to the fiscal consent agenda. And on the fiscal consent agenda is the approval of the June and July 2019 Bills List, approval of a contract with Franklin Covey Client Sales, Inc. to deliver keynote speaker at the Quakertown Community School District Convocation. Next is to approve the contract with Advanced Assessment Systems, doing business as length-it for data management and reporting. Next is approve water filtration and service rental agreement with Quench USA for the Richland Elementary School. Next is to approve agreement with the Quakertown Area Planning Committee and Bucks County Planning Commission. And last is approval of the food service capital equipment purchase with Singer Equipment Company per PA state contract 4400-19499. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Akmanowicz, discussion?
Discussion on Item C. Can somebody explain to me how this data analysis system is any different than the one we just approved last year to analyze data? Didn't we have a software package that was going to gather all the data and allow us to kick it out in pretty reports? How is this different than that?
One, the company, this is a new company. It's for us. We're jettisoning the other company. Joe, this is less expensive than the other company?
For the portion that we would be directly replacing, this is actually about $4,000, somewhere around there, less than we're currently paying. And there's no infrastructure here that we have to maintain, so...
They've become incredibly user-friendly. They've been giving us services over the last couple of months that we detest them, them detest us. And our administrators, Dr. Hoffman and Ms. Edwards, together have been going to their workshops and have come back and saying, this is where we need to go to render the reports, the kind of analysis that you would like to have in our goals report and our instructional report. So this will be very, very helpful.
I have a question. Can somebody tell me? I know we're writing checks to Dude Solutions, Inc. And, you know, I noticed that it's a cloud-based software. Can somebody just tell me why we're... It's about $10,000, so I'm just curious, or $11,000? Two checks on the June, July...
I'm just going to speak from a technology standpoint, but we also, so that's our online work order system for both technology and facilities. And I believe facilities also use the company for some work in building automation, some pieces, right? So, actually, the company's called School Dude. I mean, the name's kind of goofy, but yeah.
But you're my attention, but at the end of the day, I kind of just want to know, you know?
Dude. Dude.
Can I ask a question? This Franklin Covey Client Sales...
Yeah, I always ask.
So for $3,500 bucks, I mean, I read that it was a 45-minute presentation, and then it states here that it's followed by individual elementary school principals, consult with individual elementary school principals to discuss the leader in me process. What exactly are we buying for $3,500 bucks?
Sir, the, one, this gentleman's going to come in from, he's a Cornell professor who works as a side gig, is working for Franklin Covey. He's going to come in and be our guest speaker for convocation, talking about seven habits and connecting it into trust, connecting into execution of our daily tasks and how to build a community that's interdependent. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the seven habits piece. About three or four years ago, two of our elementary schools, their PTOs, the part of the district funding and whatnot, supported this Richland and Richland Elementary School and Nightig, adopted the leader in me program, character education program. They've implemented that into their curriculum work, too. It was, it's so powerful. Ms. Mitchell, when we had the dedication ceremony of, or the closing of the year ceremony at Nightig, when both Mr. Klein and Ms. Mitchell spoke, she had the seven habits down for all the elementary school students and talked about that. We're going to have two things done here. One, we have a speaker coming in, and then the rest of the school day, as the first day teachers are back, he's going to go around and talk to some of the other buildings, other principals and other teachers and staffs across the district and who have faculties that are interested in the program and rolling it out, too. It is quite an impressive program. I went to, an example of what happens, I went to a full-day activity or at least half-day activity at Nightig where the students took the seven habits. Parents were in there, and they were delivering speeches on taking an individual person's history, say Abraham Lincoln, John Brown, which I thought was interesting, how to tie the seven habits to John Brown was another one. But a lot, they were studying Civil War history, and they were talking, taking one habit and relating that to their discussion. Having, I guess about a month ago, I had the statewide coordinator for Franklin Covey come in and talk to the rest of the principals about it. They were very much interested in bringing that program to their building. So I'm hitting two birds with one stone, and I know it's a...
So it's a 45-minute, just to go back to the question, a 45-minute keynote speaker, and he's meeting individually with principals?
Principals and their faculties of all school.
On the first day of school?
Not on the first day of school. This is the first day of teachers coming back.
Okay, so he's going to meet with them and their group and spend an hour with each of these?
Yes, sir. That's the game plan. So we're going to get a lot of bang for the buck. And there, and as an example, Matt was in here. I don't know if you've asked for him to come, but I know several of the other principals are very much interested in doing this. And his compliments are PBIS, our Positive School Behavior Program, and so it's, which is one of our goals. So it's directly tied to one of the superintendent goals and board goals.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the fiscal consent agenda as presented, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is public comment on the facilities consent agenda. Okay, the facilities consent agenda tonight is to approve a change order with ProCon Roofing Corporation for the sixth-grade center gymnasium roof replacement. Do I have a motion to approve the facilities consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Jackson, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Weed, discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of accepting the facilities consent agenda as presented, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Public comment on human resources items being presented for a vote tonight. Okay.
I would, Matt, would you come up to the podium, please? And I'd like you to introduce our recommended assistant principals at the high school, please?
Certainly. And first, thank you for your appointment of myself as the high school principal. I had not had an opportunity to say thank you since I was not here at the previous board meeting. So I'm here today, then, to introduce our recommendations for house principal. I'm very proud to introduce to you Adam Dini. He, Adam comes to us from William Allen High School, and Adam has impressed me by his ability to be a systems thinker. Adam cares not only about his students as individuals, but has proven himself at William Allen High School to identify areas of need school-wide and implement systems there. And in his particular circumstance, he has implemented a system of tracking students who may be at risk of becoming a dropout. And so he has taken the steps to put systems in place in ninth grade, early on, to identify students, working closely with incoming eighth graders, to identify these students who may be at risk to become high school dropouts, and making sure that they receive the services and opportunities they need to be successful later on in their high school career. So Adam has impressed me not only by his care and concern for individual students, but also to implement that on larger skills and make a bigger impact on the school as a whole. And the second person I would like to recommend today is Jen Carla, and she comes to us from Amay's High School. And Jen has tremendous expertise in school counseling, has led her department in the school counseling from a K-12 department. There she has identified in her school over some time areas of need as well, and has revamped some of the organization and structure of that department and has greatly benefited the students of her school there. I believe both individuals will be a great addition to the high school staff. I think they will make a significant mark on the community as a whole. My strong recommendation today is for you to approve these fine individuals for house principal of the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The cool thing is, you all get to start together on your journey. Build that team.
That's it?
Why are there so many unpaid leaves? Like, they all seem to be in the same range of unpaid leave.
Well, let's save that for the discussion portion, if you don't mind. So tonight's human resources consent agenda is administrative staff, professional staff, supervisory and technology staff, support staff, and substitute staff. So do I have a motion to accept the human resources consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Akmanowicz? And second by Mr. Anderson, discussion? Go ahead, David.
Like, I noticed the leaves that we're going to approve this evening, you know, many, there's like five or six of them that are all running, you know, from basically September to next January. What's with the large break? I mean, is there something happening where they're all leaving to go and to do a special project or something, and then they're coming back? Or is it just...
Yes, sir, but I'll let Mr. Shock talk about that.
I'll be maybe cryptic here because it's personnel. I'll give you an example of what that might be. Something such as a child-rearing leave for a semester would be an example of an unpaid leave absence. That answers your question.
It may. Thank you.
Can I ask the professional staff be removed and have two separate votes?
So you want it polled for a separate vote?
Yeah.
He asked to poll professional staff, so we're going to pull that from the human resources consent agenda and vote on that separately.
Correct.
Okay.
Is the motion to amend the motion to remove the professional staff from the motion and then second and approve that amended and then proceed?
But I want to know why before we vote to remove it. Why do you want to remove it?
There's a motion on the floor, that's why.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, so what he said, no...
I'll make a motion to remove B from the human resource consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We have a motion on the floor to remove B from the professional staff. We have the motion and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Hold on, let's discuss. Porta K. Why? Why do you want to move it?
The discussion would come after we polled and we're doing this, obviously.
Correct.
Oh, this is a vote...
This is just to pull it out and vote on it separately.
Just voting for B.
Why? Like, that's what we're asking. Why do you want to pull it?
Because I want to abstain.
Oh, he wants to abstain.
Yeah.
Oh, but you want to vote on everything else? Thank you.
I can vote for everything else. Maybe there's a McCucci here or a relative, okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of pulling B and voting on it separately, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Okay. Should we vote on that first?
We need to vote on the amended motion, which is just everything but professional staff.
Okay. Okay, so now we go back to the original human resources consent agenda, less professional staff. Is there any more discussion about that? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the human resources consent agenda, less B professional staff, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and congratulations and welcome aboard. It's all yours. That brings us to the separate vote on the professional staff. Is there any discussion before we vote on that?
Need a motion to approve that before you have a discussion.
Oh, okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the professional staff portion of the human resources consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Give it to Mr. Anderson and Mr. Kern, second discussion. I think Mr. McCucci answered your question, so all those in favor of accepting the professional staff, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. All those opposed? The motion carries almost unanimously. Okay. Next is public comment on policies and program items being presented for a vote tonight. Okay, not seeing any public comment. Next is the policy and programs consent agenda. This is approve a contract with Brett de Novi and Associates, LLC, proposal for behavior educational consultation for the 2019-2020 school year. Approve the Pathway School Extended School Year 2019 contract. Approve contract number 1103-0819-43 for extended school year services for 2019. Approve the Intergovernmental Agreement for Special Education Services with Carbon Lehigh IU, number 21. And last, approve contract for membership in the Consortium for Mental Health and Optimal Development at Penn GSE 2019-2020. Do I have a motion to approve the policy and programs consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mrs. Weed, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Akmanowicz, discussion?
Under letter E, what are we getting for our membership in this organization?
Someone from the administration?
I can answer that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So Dr. Hoffman, Ms. Edwards, and myself will be going to monthly meetings that will be addressing mental health in schools and how we can best approach that with our students and our families.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom.
Sounds fantastic.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the policy and programs consent agenda as presented, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We... We have information items. An update on the NES additions and renovations, due engineering. That is on board docs if you wish to look at it. Dr. Harner's leadership of Quakertown Community School District was honored by the Peace Center recently. There is, pardon? Willby, excuse me. So there's some information on there, on board docs if you care to look at it. There are also some thank you notes to the board, and as always, the board briefing book.
Do we get a free dinner if we go to Dr. Harner's thing?
This is, this is about. The Peace Center has been a partner of ours since we had the racial incident back in October 8th of 2017, and they're recognizing the whole community, you know, our response to, I would say it's our collective response because with a.
If I get a free dinner if I tackle one?
Well, sir, that, I haven't gone down that road yet, but I just wanted to, the purpose of putting it on here was to put it on your radar that that's out there.
I, I believe that is, to get there, you have to go down 313, so you do pass a Dairy Queen, so maybe they'll buy you a cone.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Owned by the JOC Board President.
Okay. Next is any new board business?
I have a question I want to raise. I'm sorry to do this at such a late hour, but it seems to me that when we left the superintendent goal issue at the end of last year, there's a lot of desire to get more involved as a board in crafting next year's superintendent goals. Yet when I saw the superintendent gold calendar earlier in the agenda, I really didn't see any board input, other than board updates as we went through the year. No, I understand.
Retreat?
No, I'm talking about something much, much more intensive, because it is typical that the superintendent and the administration will present us their goals for next year with very little input from the board as to what they are, other than for you to show it to us and then us to discuss them. I'm talking now about whether or not this board as a group wants to have much more hands-on discussion throughout the year as to what those goals will be for calendar year 2020, 2021. And essentially, what I'm suggesting is that this board form an ad hoc committee to assist the superintendent, or to work with the superintendent and the administration in crafting goals for that up future year. I'm just throwing it out there. It's a comment and a suggestion for discussion.
One, I love to have all the dialogue, and so I understand, and our team understands where the board, what the board's thinking, and what it wants us to do so we can get there. My suggestion is, my thought on your ad hoc, if you look at our goals, most of them are in alignment with our already standing committees. So we have the finance, we have academics, we, safety is kind of in there intermixed, mental health is under education.
Well, I think we all.
So is to use your committee process to go work through the goals, because that's where we spend most of our time talking about what we're, we've been doing, what we are doing, and what we're planning on doing.
My concern is we've found in the past that the limited time we spend at a board retreat just isn't enough time. And, I mean, that's, I don't know if everybody else feels the same, but I'm just saying, we don't have enough time at a board retreat to do what we want to shape the goals. That's why I'm suggesting this. Now, the board doesn't want to take that position, then it's fine, but I'm throwing it out of the table for discussion right now.
So Dr. Harner, you've mentioned something new raining down upon us from Harrisburg?
Yes, sir.
In terms of?
It rains down on every district.
More rigorous requirements than even what we have, or, like, in other words?
Not requirements, it's a process of coming up with your long-term strategic three-year plan. And it's a, it's a process that's required, and we have to generate a report out of that process back to PDE, and they either put their stamp on it and saying this is good, or send it back to us with questions. But that, that's a combination. I'm all excited about having more discussion, but, and.
Yeah, so I would tend to agree with Mr. Jackson that it certainly seemed like something we wanted to tackle, right? Mr. McCucci, we kind of agreed to that, that we didn't do it enough last year, and we need to take a little, another pass at it, and I, you know, frankly, would revel in the opportunity to even simplify it, frankly.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think there was, really the competing force was the time in which we started. It was late in the year, we had not enough time, school year was going to start, there was going to be too much pressure, there was a lot of variables that we were faced with. I think starting a process early, maybe an ad hoc committee, is a decent idea with folks who want to sit down and kind of, you know, throughout the early portion of the school year, address, you know, what are we going to look like in January and February at the retreat where we start? You should have these hammered out pretty early on.
From the early presentation that was on the agenda, it's item 4C, the calendar I see in front of me shows a January board retreat where they update us on the mid-year goals, and that we discuss the goals for the following year. That's it. That's all they have. And I just don't see that being enough based upon the conversations we had this past year. A single board retreat.
Well, this agenda is an agenda for reporting. Yeah, I think you're looking.
No, but if you look on the other side, it says comprehensive planning and gold input for the next development, you know?
Yeah, so you're looking for, you know, there needs to be something here early on. Yeah, and not in January.
But to kind of get cut to the chase would not, it not be prudent then the ad hoc committee be the, the different separate committee chairs?
That's exactly what I was thinking, sir.
Oh, man. Just committee chairs sit down and create the framework of those discussions, and they go back out to their own committees and then bring, start bringing the things together.
Would, would the committee chairs that are here tonight be willing to form an ad hoc committee to do that?
Yeah, is Ms. Mitchell part of that, too? Because I know that's something she'd be, yeah, she'd be really interested in that, I know, from her comments.
Mr. Jackson, you're on so many committees, you would be on it. Yeah.
Yeah, my committees are kind of like outside of the normal scope of things, really, though.
Well, I'll tell you what, um.
I'll be the guy that complains, that's it.
I mean, a committee is open to everybody. We all go there the same.
If, if everybody's in agreement, then, you know, let's, let's form the ad hoc committee, and do we need to vote on that?
Well, I think as the president, you can.
I know.
Form an ad hoc committee, so.
Okay.
I think you're getting a consensus, I don't think you're getting a lot of negativity about that idea.
No. Okay, well, then I'll, I'll appoint all the committee chairs as the Goals Committee. How's that?
Who's the chair of the Goals Committee?
Would the president like to be the leader?
Self-organizing.
There you go.
We have to work with Ms. Caseman instead of a first meeting, then.
Yes. Now, ad hoc committees, do they need to be advertised and all of that?
If you're having more than, if you have an accord with the board there, you have to advertise.
Okay.
Probably would, so I would advertise.
Yep.
Because of the number of committees with chairs. You're going to hit five, easy. Four. But if you're going to show up, that's five. Oh, I ain't show up.
Well, you sure sounded like you were. Mr. Kern's going to show up.
I think it would be prudent to advertise your meeting.
Okay.
Just because you don't want to have a meeting and you don't advertise, and you have four board members who leave, I mean, it's just much easier if you advertise when you're going to do it.
Monday nights at the proper. I'll be there.
All right, so the members of the committee, please speak with board secretary, Ms. Caseman, and you guys work out when, when the dates are that you want to have your first committee meeting, okay?
Early September, or before? Early September, is that a good time just to get her to start throwing out dates?
Just not a Tuesday before seven. That's my only restraint I have.
Tuesday before what?
Can't do a Tuesday before seven for me.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
How about I, I will send an email next, early next week to all the committee members to solicit what works as far as frequency.
And proper.
Well, the proper's open till, what, 11:00, so.
Yeah, and it has to be the evening.
And location.
We could rotate to Spinnerstown and, you know, Brick Tavern.
John, are you a committee chair?
If it's at a brew pub, I am.
Well, no, that's, that's what I'm saying, well, we could just sit over there and watch them work.
They could cross the bar.
Just happen to be there, yes.
That was born at night, I guess.
Okay, any other, any other board, new board business?
Yeah, I had two quick items. So one, mark your calendars for October 19th. Thank you to Mr. Sweda and the tech school. The Richland PTO is having a color run, and the food truck that Mr. Akman was talking about, we'll be there for that. So that's a, it's a fun night, and you get to eat, too. I'll have to check on the time, I think it was around like 5:00 o'clock last year. I had a great time at it, I was just covered in color.
Even without the food truck, you had a great time?
I did.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. And then I just wanted to follow up on the donation idea we talked about, the finance committee. I know we do a lot of talk about what to do about raising taxes, and really the only thing we do to increase revenue is, one, is increase taxes, or I was thinking soliciting donations. I know Mr. Jackson's QCA does a great job locally, but I feel that if we don't ask, we don't know what's out there from a national level, whether it's a large national company or whatever. It could be something sponsoring technology or whatever we need, so that was one of the things I'd, I'd asked us to check in a little bit further to see if there's a way to solicit donations from large organizations across the country to help the school district. So hopefully we'll have more information on that after the next finance committee meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Deliberto. Any other new board business?
Not new, just a reminder about the nice, fairly large pollution factory that'll be going in 1.5 miles from Trumbiresville School. The compressor station will be spitting out toxic chemicals 24/7. We have students that will be living directly around this facility, and students inside that school building less than two miles downwind. So I want to once again remind you and stress to everybody on this board that this is a very dangerous thing to have in our community. Over the last two weeks, there have been several, three, I think I counted, explosions of pipelines running through other communities and other parts of the nation. That can happen here very easily, and if we're not looking out for the health and welfare of our children, what are we doing? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akmanowicz.
Mr. Garten, you had talked to, I think, Rock Hill Township. Was there anything more that has come of that?
I'm in touch with the solution on a regular basis. She's going to key me in when it would be more appropriate for the next level of.
What he's been doing? What are you talking a lot, huh? What he's doing?
Well, I asked you for some data to send to them, if you recall, at the prior meeting.
I have sent you, I thought, I swear, I thought I sent you that.
Pardon?
I thought I sent you some information.
Oh, no, you haven't sent me anything. I called up her and asked her what's coming up next, and I said what's going on, what's happening, and she's going to let me know when it's appropriate to add some additional fuel to the fire. She'd like correspondence and letters at the right moment. So, Mr. Akmanowicz, I asked you if you could do that so I could add that to the correspondence in support of it. So if you could do that, I'd be happy to do it right away.
Thank you.
And I'm pretty sure against the federal regulations, they're not spewing out tons of toxic chemicals.
No, they are.
Where's the proof?
I, I'm so sorry, but for somebody, and I've said this before, who is so skeptical of large government, you seem to be rolling over very easy on this.
Well, I'm just saying, where's the proof? I read the documents.
I sent you information.
Yeah, and I read them.
Yeah, and what, you didn't see any toxic chemicals inside any of?
Of course, there's toxic chemicals come out of your car. Maybe not, maybe not yours. Well, at any rate, you.
These cars.
You're over-exaggerating.
No, I'm not.
And the option behind not having pipelines is having them trucked and trained.
Or we can divest from fossil fuels altogether, but that's neither here nor there, that's not what we do. I'm talking about keeping our children safe.
Well, you need to have some proof. There's all kinds of things. There's, you know, put up, why don't you put up?
You don't know what a carcinogen is?
No, I don't, David. I've never heard of that.
Oh, yeah.
Help me understand what a carcinogen is.
Mr. Garten, I have a question on this subject real quick, and I, forgive me, but I don't know, you may not either, but as part of this compressor station being built, are there any requirements for them to do air quality samples and testing?
There are air quality regulations imposed by the state and federal government, just like any other structure or operation that has an event where air is discharged.
Who does the testing, do you know?
The gas companies.
Normally, I was going to say normally it's self-testing, and you provide the results.
That, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Mr. Akmanowicz, the one question I would have is, when this issue first came up, if you recall, the board did draft a letter and send it out, I think to our congressman, requesting that they support our decision not to permit, you know, we were against it, and we sent that out to the congressman. In fact, I believe Mr. Fitzpatrick, if not all the local ones, have also sent letters of opposition to this, this commutation being put in, okay? So we have taken that action. Apparently that's, you're looking for something that this board should.
That's like step one of 7,000 things.
And, and the reason I bring it up, because I'm asking you, as a board, as the people on this chair, what would you have us do to prevent this from happening?
That's what I would turn to our lawyer for. What, what do we have? Can we file an injunction to not have them open it?
They're not even inside our district.
Doesn't matter, we're still downwind.
We say that the primary agency that has been carrying the torch in opposition to the compressor station is the township. They are actively involved with appeals on the zoning aspect of it. They are also actively involved in the regulatory process, and were able to open up the record, I believe, for additional commentary before the Federal Energy Regulation Commission, I think is the proper reference. So that, pardon me, that opportunity remains in play to continue to be arguing about the federal regulatory process as we speak. The other aspect of the zoning issue is now at the Commonwealth Court.
I'm glad we're working with Rest Rock Hill, but I think that we should be doing whatever we can on our own as well and not just following their lead. I just don't find that to be enough.
Well, whatever the board chooses to do is, you know, what I can do.
What would our options be in an instance like this?
Well, I mean, you could, there's, there's no action taken, I don't believe, to affirmably grant all the permits. I mean, you could theoretically file an action in federal court when they issue a permit to say that they are not in accordance with the act, or they're creating a nuisance, or whatever the case may be, and then you go through the federal process to argue over whether the regulatory agencies have done their job or not. That's one element of it. That's probably the only element that really has any relevance.
Do you know what the cost of doing that would be?
I have no idea at this point.
Okay. Any other new board business? Okay, that brings us to our final public comment.
Hi, I'm sorry for.
Hi, no, that's quite all right.
The topics.
Now, this is your second public speaking.
Yes.
You should be much more comfortable now.
I am, totally, just a little shorter, but, um, first of all, I was telling Chris, I understand totally why he's running. It's really hard to sit there and not have a voice in the conversation, so maybe in a couple of years when I learn the rules, I might be sitting up there, especially with only three girls there.
You don't need to learn the rules.
There's only two of us on the board.
Women.
Literally, we could use some more women.
There's only two on the board. Where's the other woman?
Right, she's a, she's a woman, but she's not on the board.
Jackson, I wanted to give you something because I actually follow the Franklin Covey and it's all about setting goals on the back of that. It's a productivity term where you identify your values, you set goals, you break it down, so having that meeting before school starts is the most important part of it. You need to set out your goal for the next year, break it down to manageable pieces, it makes complete sense. And if your principals are using that system, maybe you guys could get familiar with it, and everybody could be on the same page and working with the same tools. and everybody could be on the same page and working with the same tools. Anyway, going back to what I wanted to talk about, I have a daughter who has a learning delay and I got a letter from her developmental pediatrician of, hey, it takes a little longer for her, you know, she's going to need some one-on-one help. And she came to the testing and I work really hard at home, we have a whole school set up during the summer, so I taught her her letters, her numbers, everything, we work on it every day. So when she came to the testing, she passed, she knew how to count 10 identifying dots on paper or whatever requirements. But apparently that's the only requirement they needed for full-day kindergarten, so the fact that she learned slower was irrelevant completely, which I think should be something that could be changed in the short term. Like, if a kid has ADHD and is going to take longer, three hours of school, not really going to sink in. So, right now she's in half-day, it's kind of too late to change anything about that, but maybe it's something that the board could visit for the next few years. Sorry, that's the public speaking, I promise I'm not saying.
Take a breath, it's okay.
But maybe it's something that could be changed so that we can help the kids who need the help the most. On a long-term goal, I, um, I wanted to talk about full-day kindergarten in general. There's been a lot of research done on it. I have a list here. It comes out in greater creativity, higher self-esteem and independence, higher test scores, fewer grade attentions, higher reading scores in early grades, higher achievements for disadvantaged and low-income children, higher long-term achievements. I mean, if we're doing anything here, it's trying to make our, the kids who graduate from this school district successful in life. And the first step is kindergarten, so I know there's budgeting, there's issues here and there, but it's definitely something that should be in the back of our minds to get them started on the right path because a lot of school districts already have that and we're pretty far behind. And I just, again, I'm inspired when you guys talk and I make little notes about the compression station. I did send petitions, nothing really got done, but don't believe all those regulations and the company saying, yeah, it's all fine, look at Jewel. They said that they're not putting anything bad or anything and we're supposed to just take their word for it. They're like, no, no, we're definitely not trying to get your kids to try smoking at sixth grade. They have customers for life now. So all we can do is prevent and heal, so you guys have the power to do that, so just take every issue seriously and, you know, lead with your heart, not just numbers.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is the calendar of items. On August 22nd, there is an Education and Curriculum Committee meeting at 6:00 PM in Community Room A. Also at 6:00 PM, the Finance Committee meets in Board Caucus Room Number Three, followed then by the work session, regular voting meeting, 7:00 here in the Community Room. On August 28th is the convocation at the Quakertown Performing Arts Center at the senior high school. On September 5th at 6:00 PM is the Facilities Committee meeting in Board Caucus Room Number Three. On September 12th, there is a Finance Committee meeting in Board Caucus Room Number Three, also at 6:00 PM. On September 19th at 6:30 PM, the Policy Committee meeting in Board Caucus Room Number Three. And on September 26th at 7:00 PM is the next works, another work session, regular voting meeting in the Community Room.
September 19th, Mr. President, also is a JOC meeting.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Akmanowicz. And this brings us to our final event, which is to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? I'm sorry.
So moved.
Excuse me, one thing. There is an executive session following the conclusion of the board meeting and this will be to, to discuss personnel and legal matters. Okay, now do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Mr. Akmanowicz, do I have a second? Mr. Jackson, all those, discussion.